Well, it's not unfinished. Do we start something from there?
Well, here we go.
I can imagine.
All right, let's call the order of workshop meeting for September 20th, 2022 at 5:03 PM.
Councilmember Escobia.
Here.
Councilmember Lamont.
Here.
Councilmember Stoya.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols.
Here.
Councilmember Ilyas.
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on this nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, communication from the mayor, including this approval last of the mayor.
You got the letter.
Thank you.
So I have a letter that I'll be reading in chambers unless you want me to read it.
Yeah, do it up there. That's fine. Okay, we're going to communications from the public and petitions. Number one.
Number one, request from Jessica Maku to have a bounce house on September 24th, 2022 at the Host Foreground Pavilion at Point Rashid for her daughter's sixth birthday party. They have turned in a liability insurance certificate.
Any discussion, council? Not number two.
Notice of claim from Lana Hadley of 32 East Fifth Street for damages caused to her living room window allegedly due to stone rock from city-operated lawnmower at Washington Park.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none. Number three is number one.
Number three has a walk-on request from DHS Student Council to close Sixth Street from Marider Drive to Flober Streets October 7th, starting at 3:00 PM for the homecoming parade and vending truck exit.
Any discussion, council?
Counselor?
Yes, sir.
I don't have that. If I could get a copy of that, so I can give it to our lieutenant so he can make sure they get it taken care of.
I made an extra copy just for you, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to reports as standing and special committees. Councilwoman Stoya.
I'm here.
Councilmember Lamont.
Bill.
Yes.
That property on the 200 block of Swan Street is on the outside, and I've been asking to ask them about it. I hear people are moving in and out of there, sleeping there at night. There's no electrical in there. There's trees growing up in front of it that they gotta go. It's just, where are we?
I don't know what time that is.
It's near the corner of Second Street, West Second and Swan. If you walk through the backyard, you go into Lakeside Precision.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the owner's deceased.
He's still in there.
He's. Yeah, as far as I know.
But there's still stuff that has to be taken here in part and I'm on those trees.
We'll get a poster. I know the grass is cut.
Please swap.
Around the grounds. Maybe we can go farther and get it.
We'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
That's all. Okay. Councilman Stoya.
I've been hurt.
Councilwoman Nichols.
No.
I have nothing. In the regular meeting, we'll ask Mr. Myers to speak on behalf of his flea market that he ran over the summer. That's what we got on standing committees. Unfinished business. None, thank you. Prefiled resolution.
Number 79, resolution authorizing amendment to extend border patrol augmentation program.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Eighty.
Number eighty, resolution approving agreement with Chautauqua County Humane Society for Animal Holding Services.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, I was wondering why we're not making this agreement with the Lakeshore Humane Society?
They have no room.
They have no room. Okay, thank you.
The state mandated that we do it. We have a second, have to have a secondary facility.
Thank you.
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one, resolution authorizing emergency repair work for the roof and masonry of the fire headquarters tower.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none. Let's move to new business. No new business. Okay, can I? Motion. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Call Ropos.
Councilmember Escobia.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamont.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoya.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember Ilyas.
Aye, more adjourned. Public can only see. Public. So we're good to go. Are we ready to go? Oh, absolutely.
People are wondering. You know, if you got any extra millings.
Favorite or doing it?
Yeah. Thanks, Randy.
A little bit too big for her.
Oh, really?
It's big, Sam.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, she liked it.
Good.
I was telling my wife, because I can tell where the man is.
Yeah.
Maybe there's a couple that are terrible. But most of them.
What do you think? Yeah.
I was telling my wife, because I can tell where the man is.
Yeah.
My house.
Sure.
It's rough. Maybe there's a couple that are terrible. But most of them.
Our car's.
He has the biggest.
He had the biggest.
See if I got my.
How do you hit it?
Coordination.
All right, that answers about.
Sixty-one.
Okay, it's the last question.
Yep.
You see that?
So she's not me on this.
Yeah, well, we're.
Yeah, that's what we did.
We did issue.
Last case.
He just looked at the door inside and came around.
Did I treat her?
I don't want him to see.
I'm trying to.
Try to look.
And she said he called on the stairs.
Just one.
When I call.
You're what?
So it's almost like he's.
You see?
Yeah.
Supposedly. He was in the service.
Another official.
And then.
They were supposed to go work.
We got here.
There was another one.
I got this. Are you saying he got bad? What is he showing?
Yeah, Gene was.
Wasn't doing too bad.
Well, he had that situation.
He had to take the body while taking care of you.
He was.
He was going to kill.
There's my birds.
He was from the school up there.
He's out of there.
He's pulling.
He's got a lot of business. I got.
He's got a bigger chamber.
Right there.
She was.
Power.
Right.
She said she still managed.
See.
No, no, no.
I can't.
Of course, I wanted.
He's such a bad.
That's the strike.
I was gonna say, hold tight.
He's gonna have to channel.
I was saying that was.
Bad one.
She's.
Because.
He's a dyke.
The house was working out.
You ever seen a man?
She said, no.
Hey.
Although.
She never reported.
Two weeks later.
I might have.
So.
It's.
Right.
You don't like.
That could end up problems like that.
That's what it is. We're doing it wrong together.
We've got the big.
That is.
We're talking about.
We're talking about.
We have definitely. I was. If they're. They're. No, I was doing some stuff. How's he not?
She's here.
Do you know?
Yeah.
Here.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Here.
Councilmember Stoyel.
Here.
Councilmember Nichols.
Here.
Councilmember at large D'Amico.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, certification in the prior meeting?
This is to certify that an official copy of the minutes of the common council meeting of Tuesday, September 6, 2022 was presented to the mayor on Tuesday, September 13, 2022. Pursuant to section 3.03 of the Dunkirk City Charter, all items presented to the mayor are now in full force and effect and witness where I have heretofore set my hand and the seal of the city of Dunkirk, New York this 20th day of September, 2022.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Some of them.
Second.
Nichols, second by Lescoviac.
Councilmember Lescoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large D'Amico.
Aye, carried.
Reading of the privilege of the floor regulations.
The privilege of the floor shall be extended to any person appearing for themselves, in which case that individual shall be limited to three minutes. And to any person representing a group who shall be limited to five minutes. When recognized, please stand and state your name and address. The city clerk shall have the duty of maintaining such time limit, and the councilman-at-large may determine in his discretion whether individuals are speaking for themselves or representing groups. Councilman-at-large D'Amico shall maintain good order and may require any speaker to cease speaking if remarks are made in bad taste, slander, or non-germain to any action taken or contemplated by council. The time limit specified shall be strictly adhered to, except that a speaker may be allowed to complete a statement or thought started before such time has expired.
Okay, privilege of the floor is now open. Would anyone like to speak?
Hello, all. Paul Sommerfeld, Brooks Avenue for the Citizens Advisory Committee. Sorry about that, I can't hear myself speak. A couple of weeks ago, we had that back-to-school event going on, and there were vehicles that were associated with that event parking on the grass. And I guess that suggested to other vehicles they could park on the grass. So there were more people parking on the grass than usual. And one of them pulled off in front of me near the exit. And as I passed by that person, I noticed that there were several empty parking spaces. That got me to thinking. We've got all these signs that tell you where not, that you're not supposed to park on the grass, but do we have any signage that tells people where to park? And the next time I drove around the point, I didn't see a single sign that told people where they should park. And I think that that's something that should be addressed. Instead of using that stick method, perhaps we should be using the carrot method to let people know where to park and basically pull away from them the negative side, but do some positive reinforcement. Also, I noticed some people on the other side of the fence on the cliffs, and perhaps we should have taller fences in that area instead of just the small speed bumps that we seem to have right now for the fencing. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
What was he talking about?
Anyone else like to speak?
I know.
Yeah, hi, my name is David Richardson at 216 King. I was wondering, I go to the dog park a lot here in Dunkirk. Yet there's no water for any of the animals. Now, a lot of people that go there do not seem to bring any water. So what I did was, is I've noticed people are leaving water for other people there and jugs, stuff like that. So I actually put a five-gallon container there with water, and I've been filling it every day. One of the things I was wondering, is there any way you guys could possibly put a water source there so that animals, when they're playing around, running around, stuff like that, have water? So they're not, you know, dehydrated and stuff like that? I heard someone else tell me that it's possible, like there were plans in the works for this, but I don't know what happened. So I was just wondering if that's a possibility we could bring up, to put a water at the dog park?
We'll see what we can do.
EJ.
Randy, is that something we can address?
Absolutely. It was, we'd like to have a drinking fountain there. Something that's a high level for people, something that's a low level for dogs.
Something like that, yeah. Maybe with a stop thing, so it's not fully flowing, you know?
But it would be up against the building, and that's where the water is. It wouldn't be out, it wouldn't be too far to walk between the build, the main building and over to the dog park, right?
The main building, you mean the, the, I know, I noticed it's a building there for an animal shelter, but it's not really on the park itself. I'm talking about maybe inside the fence? Like maybe you could run something in there?
It would be easier for us to put one at the dog shelter on the outside. And you have to drive by it as you go into the dog park.
Yes.
Be a label there, you know, if people could figure it out that humans drink the higher one and dogs can drink the lower one. And we'll, I, I, it can't be a unique idea. Somebody else has still have thought of this. So I'm gonna research that, come up with something that matches that. Wouldn't be hard for the city plumber to plumb it in. We're all for it. Totally agree that dogs have to be hydrated as well as we do. So I think it's a great idea. I'm glad you reminded us.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you, we'll work on it. Anyone else like to speak?
I just want to ask, EJ, did they not put an outside spigot when they did the shelter over there?
Not on, not when they did, we did the grant work for the animal shelter. That was specifically for the shelter itself. Because we did ask about running a line over there, but it had to be separate from the grant.
Right, but I thought right at the shelter there was, they were going to do an outside spigot there.
They put that fire hydrant in as a decorative thing, but there's no water to it. There is a little bit of money, I think, left in the dog park donation.
Right.
That maybe there's enough there to actually get the hydrant or the water piece or something. They're not allowed.
They could probably do it in-house.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, we'll work on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Going once, twice, three times. Privilege of the floor is closed. Communication from the mayor, including disapproval messages. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make an announcement, and then I want to defer to our department head to give an update on the paving. I've been asked about the paving of streets. I just want to confirm there will be seven streets paved. One of them is Buckner, the other Plover, Salchaboa, Gazelle, Robin, Deer Street, and Gresham Court. So these are the streets that we're looking at paving this year. But I would like for our director of DPW to, to give you more specific information as far as timelines and things of that nature. Before I do, I just want to let the council know that I'm very close on the budget for 2023. I will be looking to propose that the first week of October to the council. So hopefully, we'll have everything lined up by then. And then also, just want to let you know that my office has been contacted by state-elected officials, members of the governor's office, who are putting together a relief effort for the people in Puerto Rico. And so the city is somewhat involved. Not the city of Dunkirk in any way, but we're basically just going to be putting a basket into the clerk's office and letting people know that if they wish to donate, they can donate in that basket. That basket will then be provided to the Hispanic Heritage Council of Western New York, who is working with the statewide organizations to move those funds where they're needed on the island. So at this point, I would like to defer again to our director of DPW to, to give you a better update on the paving of streets, please.
Sure. The, we met with the contractor, Lake Shore Paving, same company that did the work last year. We did $1.2 million of paving last year. This year, the CHIPS budget is about a third of a million. But we still can do, get a lot of bang for the buck. We prioritized, with the mayor's help, the streets with the most dire need. And we have seven, as the mayor listed. And that'll come up to exactly the third of a million dollars. And, and the contract was executed by the mayor and myself and the contractor today. They're gonna start the work next week. Most of the roads get milled and paved, and a couple of the roads just get the overlay because they have a substantial base already. So it's gonna be a nice project. We're, as I say, we're gonna start next week and keep track of it. We're gonna, we've had good luck with this contractor. And I think everybody, we have a nice balance of dire streets, and it's also balanced out throughout the city, too. Each ward is treated about equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, I have a communication from the Northern Chautauqua Conservation Club Incorporated, specifically Xenon Olo, chairman of the Walleye Derby. And it is entitled to Mayor, City of Dunkirk, Willie Roses. Dear Mayor Roses, on behalf of our Northern Chautauqua Conservation Club Incorporated, our derby has been a great success this year. Without your contributions and support, our derby would not be as successful and enjoyed by so many fishermen and their families. Thank you for your valuable support sponsoring our derby.
Received the file. Okay, let's move on to communication from the public and petitions. Number one?
Number one, request from Jessica Maku to have a bounce house on September 24, 2022 at the Hose For Grounds Pavilion at Point Grasset Park for her daughter's sixth birthday party.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as approve to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
Second.
I got Nichols with a second by Bemanto.
Councilmember Lescoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large D'Amico.
Aye, carried.
Number two, notice of claim from Lana Hanley of 32 East Fifth Street for damages caused to her living room window allegedly due to snow, stone slash rock from city-operated lawnmower at Washington Park.
Any discussion, council?
I'd say we got some good lawnmowers.
That's quite a flight. Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to refer to legal and DPW?
Some of them.
Nichols, can I have a second?
Say it.
Bemanto?
Councilmember Lescoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large D'Amico.
Aye, carried.
Okay. So number three?
Number three, I have a walk-on request from DHS Student Council to close Sixth Street from Marauder Drive to Plover Streets, October 7, starting at 3:00 PM, for their homecoming parade and vending truck access.
Any discussion, council? So this is receiving file? Liability. Okay.
Some of them.
So, okay, we're gonna refer to legal and also DPW, or Dunkirk Police.
I do have a question. Chief, is that the same day they do the parade, too? They gotta ask for that, or?
I'll have Lieutenant Deetsen contact them. If it is the same, we'll just do it all in one. You do it every year, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we're gonna need a motion then.
Yes, sir.
So refer to legal and to Dunkirk Police. I got Nichols on a motion.
Second.
Second by Bemanto.
Councilmember Lescoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyel.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Aye.
Councilmember at large D'Amico.
Aye, carried.
Reports of standing in special committees, boards, and commissions. Councilwoman Lescoviac.
Yes, I wanted to mention that this Sunday, September 25, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Dunkirk Fairgrounds is a free event, Get on a Train Day. It's an event to raise public awareness and support for a new passenger train stop in Dunkirk. It's sponsored by Connect Dunkirk and the Dunkirk Historical Society. Take a tour of the Brooks Engine Number 444, a piece of Dunkirk's own history. And then I wanted to thank you to the Dunkirk Fedonia Lions Club, the Dunkirk Boy Scouts, and Professor Jarvis and her SUNY students for the cleanup of the point effort this past Saturday. Many volunteers, including myself, showed, and the beach is thoroughly cleaned from end to end. And then this Saturday, September 24, is another hands-on neighborhoods cleanup event in our city, the east side of our city, organized by the Chautauqua County Land Bank. And it will begin at 8:00 AM at the Senior Center. And it, it'll be from 8:00 AM till 12:00 noon, sponsored by Community Bank and Lake Shore Savings. And if you can't make it at 7:00 and 8:00, it's okay, but please join us, though. We're calling on any and all citizens to come and help out. There'll be free pizza donated by Pizza Village. And Chautauqua County Land Bank will have the tools, guidance, donuts, water. And then lastly, I wanted to talk about the benefits of the medians because people are consistently asking and wondering about the new medians placed on Lake Shore Drive between Main Street and Brigham. In addition to the obvious pedestrian safety, especially in that area with the pier and Memorial Park, the medians will reduce motor vehicle crashes, decrease delays for motorists, believe it or not, increase capacity of roadways, reduce vehicle speeds, to name a few. And these benefits are proven safety measures which will facilitate calmer and easier traffic flow. So I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bemanto?
Yes, next Friday, the 30th, there'll be a Finex meeting in the mayor's conference room at 2:00 PM. A couple of recreation things going on. The flag football league for the adults have started. They play Sunday mornings at the high school with the, at the DHS High School on the turf. You know, that's a partnership we have with the city and the schools. So we thank them very much for letting our adults play there. And the rec center is opening soon, and they're taking reservations now. And I was wondering, EJ, if you have any elaborate dates, times, phone numbers?
We have a meeting with Ryan tomorrow, so I'll get some more information. But for now, just call and rec.
Because that was something in the papers. Call the rec department, but they're taking reservations now for, which is nice. This is pretty early in the season, so that's good news. And what else I got here?
366-9885.
366-9885 is the number found in rec department. Randy, what's going on on Third Street, West Third Street in Swan? See it's blocked off a little bit today?
We're updating a fire hydrant in that area. They had to have a company come in and do a tap for us.
Yeah, okay.
Water maintenance has been updating a lot of fire hydrants around the city.
Yeah, you'll notice a lot of new fire hydrants. Rob Curry and his crew have been fantastic throughout the summer to take out the old ones, put in new ones where they have low flow. We're trying to turn all the fire hydrant caps from black or red to either orange, green, or blue, which is the best. So that's one, one that was being done today.
Thanks, yeah, they've been doing a good job all year catching up on it.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Stoyel?
Dave, these bump outs, Natalie brought this up down on Lake Shore Drive. The one down by rookies, are they gonna move the state-mandated, you know, where they cross, where you're supposed to stop for traffic? Are we gonna move that over to the bump out, or?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I can answer that, yeah. It's gonna be flipping over.
Instead of having two of them?
Right, now there's one, I believe, and we're gonna coordinate that all together.
Yeah, they're gonna do the new striping and rebuilding that in the next two weeks.
Okay, thank you, that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nichols?
Yes. Okay, stop.
I had it throgged.
Have a minute. Mike, can you give us a very short upgrade on the Wi-Fi systems of that project?
Yeah, we're making really good progress. Point Grasset is pretty much ready to go. We're waiting on a couple items from DFT. Washington Park is ready to go. The skate park area, couple loose ends to tie up over there, and then Memorial Park will be hitting last.
And just, is there one more topic that we want to touch on, on the lighting within the city, those street lights?
Yeah, if you want. So we have poles along Central Avenue, the actual street lights themselves on the wooden poles, and then the pier lights themselves. We're basically waiting on parts for all those. I believe I have sourced a supplier out of state and actual manufacturer for the streetlight arms for the wood poles. We have the heads, but no arms. Central Avenue, we have the presidential poles, but no lights and globes. And the pier, we have the arms and no light fixtures themselves. So we have about half of what we need for each project, and all that stuff was basically damaged during the storms. It's just, we've been having a hard time sourcing parts, and we're trying everything and everybody.
Well, we could have parts, but we would be paying an arm and a leg for the ones. So we're waiting so that we can get what we need and a surplus of what we need in case something happens down the road.
Yep.
And not all of them were done with, from a storm. Some were accidents.
Some were accidents, the presidential poles. There was a lot of cars wiping them out, you know, left and right. And we did place some musical poles to take care of the areas downtown, but the upper areas, we had some go down. And again, we're just waiting on parts for them. We can get stuff, but for instance, a wood pole light arm, I can buy one for $1,200 right now. Normally, they cost us a little under 200. It's just, you know, it's supply and demand at this point. And, but I think I have a workaround on that.
Okay.
So hopefully, by the next meeting, we'll have a little update on that.
Okay, we're currently in the third ward for brush collection. Next week would be the fourth ward and final brush collection, unless we have an unusual storm or whatever, until it would be Christmas tree time for discarding. We're going to be, there was a great front-page coverage on DPW meeting last week. Also, I'd like to add to that list is that with Mike and Randy and Tim, we're working on getting a replacement gate for Lucas Avenue. And it can be, we're trying to see if we can get it manufactured in-house as opposed to going outside with, working with stuff that we have there on Lucas Avenue. Is that not correct, Mike?
That is correct. Yep, there were sliding gates. We're gonna turn them into swing gates, and they're about half manufactured at this point.
Okay. On your paving list, Sixth Street was not noted on there. And Sixth Street, with all the work between last year and this year with the water and the gas lines, is that, is that gonna be touched at all for resurfacing, especially up by the high school? Go ahead.
We could take a look at that later on. We want to get these done and then see what, see if we can do these on the budget and then talk to the mayor about that. Right now, we can, we can get through with these. That's, we have to work within the budget we have.
Okay, but they have, wait, Marty, they have to, people have to understand where the money for resurfacing the streets is coming from. Can you explain that so that everybody knows where, where we're getting the funds for that?
It's coming from the New York State Consolidated Highway Improvement System. And it's a, it's a state grant. We get it every year. The, in prior years, the mayor's been able to bump it up a little bit because we're a hardship community. This year, we're locked into our normal allocation. And so we, we have this schedule with the, with the most dire streets. I agree that that street probably should be looked at sometime, but we could get by another year and do it next year.
So the streets that are not being done from what council has submitted to the DPW department, can they be put on the list for next years?
The list will be a continual list. The mayor ultimately makes the decision on these streets, and those were all proposed to him. We work together to try to spread this out throughout the different wards, and we feel we're hitting the streets that need it the most.
Okay, go ahead, Marty.
I did have a question going back to Sixth Street. Those roads got tore up this year, Sixth Street and Park Roosevelt, because of contractor work, not because of what we did or regular rain terror. Can we go after the contractors? You had several different contractors and subcontractors down.
Right, that contract is not closed out, so that's an excellent idea. And we'll make sure everything's cleaned up. If we, if we have to jump into next year on the overlay on that, we want to make sure that they're perfect to get us by on that. It's not, we, you know, it's not, we'd like to do more. Last year, we had a fantastic program. This year, we're trying to keep it within the budget that we're allocated with the New York State CHIPS program.
Marty was reading my notes, because that was the second phase of mine. That's okay, Marty, you're forgiven.
Answer my eyes, anything.
I know. Well, I mean, it's just, we've had parents calling us that are going to the high school. And with all the work that was done, they want to know why they're not held responsible because there was a lot of their heavy equipment that utilized that road and that whole, that whole area there.
Yeah, and that would be the finishing touch to an otherwise fantastic project where that place had low water pressure and zero fire protection for many, many years. And we, with the grants that the mayor secured, we were able to get that done as part of the consent order. So it didn't cost anybody in the city anything and made a big improvement to spreading out excellent fire protection throughout the city. So there was, there was a big benefit to it.
If anybody's planning on, any residents planning on putting a fence or a garage up, I strongly encourage you to call our building inspector's office because there has been code changes. And you can contact that number. I mean, they are very important code changes for, within the city. It's 366-9858 if you have any thought. We don't want you to be in violation. Thank you, right, Alan?
Correct.
And I don't know if the mayor has thought of reaching out to Pro Bass or Cabelas to see if in two years that they could come back here and do another tournament?
Yep, we've already requested that from the president himself, so.
Great.
And they were very happy with, you know, the outcome of this year's tournament. So we expect that at some point, they will be back.
Thank you. And for me as a councilwoman, and I know the devastating storm that hit Puerto Rico, I hope your family that is living there are safe and, and are okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lescoviac, you had a question?
Well, since we're talking about streets, I was wondering if anyone in the administration knew when we were going to expect some monies from Biden Infrastructure Plan? Because Alice and Otter are so destitute in need.
Mayor, you want to touch on that one?
The only thing I can say is that I have not been contacted by any of our federal electeds on that plan as of yet. I do know that if we do receive some funds, that those two streets will be on that list.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't have anything pressing at this point, so I'm gonna pass. I'd like to bring Brian, Mr. Brian Myers up to give us a report on the flea market that he ran over the summer. Mr. Myers?
It was our fifth year this year. Total amount of vendors for the season was 65.
Wow.
They turn around and pay $20 each for a total of $1,300. Total expense for advertising was $687.52. I'm gonna turn in a check for $612.48. Also, I'd like to thank the mayor for his help early in the season. And hopefully, next year, we'll have a better one.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to prefiled resolutions. I'm sorry, unfinished business. None, correct?
None, sir.
All right, prefiled, 79?
Number 79, resolution authorizing amendment to extend Border Patrol augmentation program.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, clerk, call the rule.
Councilmember Lescoviac.
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto.